Oh man, I totally wasn't ready for that. Maren, last person, that last person to sign on, right?
There you go.
I think that's all we're waiting for, right, is Maren and Jeremy?
Jeremy.
Jeremy might be the main.
Yeah.
Yeah, there you go.
A little hazy in the planning commission?
We'll give it a minute before, uh, before I think I'll let Jared start the meeting and talk about what we're doing.
That is one of the, um, one of the things that we, um, why don't I, do we want to wait a minute? See if Maren and Jeremy make it, or do you want to start without them?
Yeah, I'd like, I know Maren will be here. She emailed me and asked me for another, she didn't see her invite, so I sent her one.
Okay, there's Jeremy.
So, um, I would expect that she's going to be on here shortly.
Great.
She just texted me, she just texted me and said that, um, asked me to send the invite to a different email address.
Okay. Can you do that? Is that all right?
Yep, I'm doing it.
Well, welcome Jeremy. Good to have you.
Hey, thank you. Thanks, thanks. Nice to be here.
Have you?
This will be great. Maren will pop on and we'll say, okay, you're it.
Well, let's, uh, let's give her just one, one more second to see if she can log on and, uh, and we'll get started. Jeremy and Jake, um, so you guys know usually the chair starts these pre-meetings out, um, but we don't have a chair currently. Um, that's on the agenda tonight. And one of the things that's a problem is that we, we managed to put the election of the chair and vice chair at the end of the agenda. I didn't notice that until Zach pointed it out earlier today. So, um, I have, I have a kind of a thought about how to deal with this, and this is, this is my thought. I think it would be, in years past, what we've done is kind of had a discussion in the pre-meeting about who might be willing to chair and then people have issues with being out of town or knowing they're going to miss a lot of meetings and things like that, but, um, we've kind of decided in the pre-meeting, who's going to chair the meetings or who's going to be the chair and vice chair for the year? Or who's going to get nominated anyway, or we have an idea. If we can do that again this year and then have that person, um, that's probably going to be nominated and then elected as chair, open the meeting, the regular meeting at 6:30 and first order of business would be to, you know, note that we need to move that item to the very front of the agenda so that we have a chair person. There's, well, there's Lisa too. There's Maren. It says Lisa, but that's Maren. So, welcome, welcome, Maren. So that's kind of the first order of business. We have the items on the agenda that we, we always get a chance to talk about in the pre-meeting as well and ask any questions you might have of staff before the regular meeting starts. So we can, we can kind of air some of those things beforehand, but the other main thing tonight is to decide who you all think you might want to nominate as chair and vice chair for the year. And then have that person move the election of the chair and vice chair to the beginning of the agenda so we can get that done and out of the way. Uh, so there's someone to run the meetings. Okay? So with that, do you guys want to go over the items first, or do you want to talk about who you might want to nominate first? Do you want to do an items discussion first? You're muted, Lisa.
I said bang out, bang out the items.
Okay. Well, Zach's got the first two items on the agenda, so I'll let him go over those and you can ask any questions you have.
Sure.
I'm sorry, Zach, can I do one other thing first? If you haven't had a chance, we have two new commissioners tonight, so Jake and Jeremy, I was telling them, welcome and, um, I guess we probably don't have time in the pre-meeting to really introduce everybody, but you've, this Zach and I are at most of these meetings as, as staff people and Sue and Travis and Ned and Lisa and Maren are all veterans and can help you with any questions, so don't be shy to jump in and, and ask, hey, this doesn't make any sense to me or whatever. Usually we get to sit down with you all beforehand and really, uh, get to know you and get you some information. With COVID, we don't really get to do as much of that, so please don't be shy about jumping and asking questions or calling us on the side and asking us to if things come up that don't make any sense to you and hopefully it'll, uh, it'll be a good, good experience. So we're glad to have you guys with us. Really appreciate you being willing to join, so. Um, and now I'll shut up and let Zach talk about items, sorry.
You're good. Okay, so we'll start with, uh, number four, which is the, um, actually, let's actually do this. Uh, since we haven't, have you guys had a chance to look at the minutes and stuff? Are there any changes or modifications? Okay.
I only had one, Zach. On the, on page two, the third paragraph down the first line, Casey Carlton with E4H environment, is that right?
Yeah, that's right.
It is?
Yep. It's weird. That's there.
That's it. They look good.
Okay.
I had the same question, Ned, so I looked it up in the application.
I looked back at the notes from last meeting. I didn't catch that. Good. All right. They look great.
All right. Any issues with findings of fact? All right.
No, I've prepared the motion for those if you want me to.
So you're on top of it then, so I don't really need to ask, but we only have one, correct?
I believe, I believe just one. All right, now I'll jump into my actual real items, um, which the first one is access auto, uh, or just kidding, it's depot commercial. It's a temporary conditional use permit. Um, this is for typically for construction trailers. We, we don't come before you to get permission or anything like that. They're just, they're allowed. But this one, they want to run, uh, their, their business out of here as well as they are building their building. So it's weird, it, it, and so we decided that it needed to go before you guys as a temporary conditional use permit to allow them to operate their business. If you had an opportunity to drive by, uh, you would see that they have already started putting the construction trailer there. So it's already there for the construction of the building. This is just kind of a formality to get them, get them to, allow them to operate their business. Any, any questions about that one?
Did they have to run sewer to the building? How did they do that?
That's one of the, that was one of the items that, uh, the wastewater division did have, uh, that was in the staff report. I haven't had any discussions with them, but it's a requirement either way. If they do decide to run, you know, if they are going to have a restroom, they do have to have a sewer connect. Um, and they would need to work with, with the wastewater division to, to have that.
Or a port of body.
Or.
Would that, would, would that stop a certificate of occupancy for that? Do they have to get a certificate of occupancy for that?
That's a great question. I think they do have to get some sort of occupancy. I'm not sure Jared, he perked up, so I'm thinking.
We would do certificates of occupancy for the temporary office, yeah. And I think it's the, the office question is a, is a building division question that changes it. A construction trailer does not have to have a restroom or a connection to the sewer, um, because it's not a public building in that sense. So they can just use the porta potties like, like Ned mentioned. But I believe if, if it's used as a mobile office and the business is conducted from there and any clientele would be there, they'll have to install the restroom and they do a temporary sewer connection for that.
Does this happen a lot? This is the first time I've ever seen this kind of thing.
It's not terribly common, but it's not totally unique either. I've, I've done like three or four like this in the 17 years I've been doing this kind of thing, so. I don't know what that average is because I'm very established as not good at math in my head. Four into 17, whatever that is.
All right, well.
There looks like item number two in the conditions meet the needs for that.
Yeah, the, that requirement from the wastewater division would be, would, would handle that just fine. Um, and just to, um, excuse me, I want to make sure that, I know you all are veterans of this, of this process, but I like to make sure to note as well to our, to our new, to new people. So conditional use permits in general are, uh, we have three types of uses in, in, in our zoning ordinance. There are permitted uses, which are allowed by right. Um, you don't have to come to this body or anything like that. You just get to do whatever you want. Like for a single family zone, get to build a single family home by, by right. You don't have to ask our permission. Then there are, um, not allowed uses, obviously, so, um, typically if they're not in there, then they're not allowed, at least by state code. Um, the third, which is what you'll see a whole hoop bunch of times, are conditional uses. That means that there are specific things to that use that could lead to negative impacts on a property. And state code states that, um, conditional uses shall be approved as long as they meet mitigate those impacts. So, um, there's not a lot of times where we can deny a conditional use permit. I don't think this body has actually ever denied, at least since I've been here, denied a conditional use permit. There is just how we mitigate that impact. So just, just a little bit of land use 101 there for you. So typically when we're looking at, and that's a lot of what you'll look at are conditional use permits and, um, you'll see that, you know, if, in your staff report, there are those, you know, based, subject to the following conditions, and usually that's what we, um, have. And you guys, if you, if something comes up in the public meeting portion, uh, you as a body are able to, um, create additional conditions, um, as necessary as well. So now I'll stop rambling about that and be done with that for a minute. So, any other questions on this item?
Not, not really a question, just one little quite quick little thing I noticed. Um, in the packet, it talks about having possibly up to four employees. In the application, he said four to five employees. It's one different, but it doesn't make a difference, right? We're still good?
Yeah, I don't, I don't anticipate any impact. I mean, it's the, they're going to be parking in off, onsite anyway, um, in dirt in the winter, so. And it's temporary in nature, so I really don't, I don't have a lot of concerns there.
That's what I thought you said, but I'm just checking.
For sure. Okay, then, um, I will move on to agenda item number five, which is the access auto brokers.
Jackie, I apologize. Can I ask you one more question quick about the last item? I know, quick, um, on the back, sorry, on the backside application, I highlighted something to ask you about. It says employees, it says employees may park at 211 West 4860 South. I'm sorry, I didn't go look where 211 West is. Is that cool or is that?
Yeah.
Does that conflict with we said in the conditions?
It's a property that the, the gentleman who's selling this property to these folks to build on owns as well and doesn't use. It's a kind of an unused property at the top of what we call the horseshoe. 4860 makes that loop and then becomes Fifth Avenue and comes down back to Commerce. 211 is up near the top of that loop and Mr. Woodward, that's the original property owner there, owns a bunch of kind of lightly used properties up there. So it sounds, I haven't looked at it that carefully, but it sounds like that's one of his that he's saying, I don't care if they park up here during construction as well.
Yeah, just because I didn't know where it was, I didn't know where it was. I wanted to make sure it wasn't conflicting with our condition number three, but if it's not.
Yeah, it shouldn't. Um, mixed use allows for shared parking anyway. Um, so that's, that's definitely something that they could do. So I'm not, I'm not concerned with that at all. Especially with, again, with this just being temporary in nature, I'm not worried about it. Okay. All right. So, uh, agenda item number five is access auto brokers. It is a wholesale auto sales business, um, at 4555 South Commerce Drive. As you can see on the staff report, there's a whole bunch of parcels there and it's a big mess. Um, but, um, so they are going to, they are requesting to operate a wholesale vehicle sales business from this, um, in the MG zone. That is a conditional use. Um, as you all are, all are aware. There are some unique things to this property that I'll kind of go over more in the, in the meeting itself. Um, where they have access and parking on their property. And then there is a little small strip that you can see kind of that horseshoe looking thing on the map. Um, that is technically Murray City right of way. Um, so that's kind of almost like a public street almost. And then on the other side of that, um, is owned by UDOT. And they allow for parking there as well. Which that's totally their prerogative. They can allow that if they'd like. But overall, I, I'm not concerned with this property. Um, on a site visit, I noticed that they do already have a sign up. Um, which I've, I've laid out, I believe, in the staff report, um, and you'll see a picture of that this evening. Um, so they are required to come in and actually get a sign, uh, sign permit for that. Also, they don't anticipate having many cars. They said their goal is to never have a car onsite. That they hope to have it from auction off to where it needs to go, they said. But there is the potential to have three to five that will be entirely with a warehouse area, no outside display or storage or anything like that, um, through discussions with the applicant. So, um, questions, comments on this one?
Quick question. Oh, go ahead Ned.
So, uh, Zach, I know there, there have to be at least 10 car dealerships on that street. Are they all conditional use?
Yes, um, state law requires, or state law mandates that conditional uses run with the land. So, once we approve one conditional use, um, it's allowed to continue for, in perpetuity. Um, so we could have approved a conditional use for this, who knows, back in 1982. Um, and it would still be allowed to operate today. Um, as long as it meets the conditions and the, and as the conditional use permit allows. So, um, when we bring things to you, it's because a conditional use has never been applied before. So, um, short answer is yes. If, if they have a car dealership running out of them, then they have most likely had a conditional use permit. Sue, did you have a question?
Yes, um, on the restrooms for this warehouse, is one of those restrooms ADA or does it need to be?
Uh, that would be a building division question. Um, I don't know. I, I would assume that it would probably need to be ADA, um, as long as, if they were doing any additional, if they were doing any construction or any changes to the building. Um, if it was being left as it is, they probably don't need to do those upgrades. So, and I don't think they are proposing to change anything in the building.
Okay, because I was given the impression that any building, that any business had to have their bathroom be ADA approved or accessible, but I, you know.
Jared's nodding his head.
Well, and it, that's, that's true for new construction and for change of use. So it depends on if the building department has to go through change of use for it and make the restrooms ADA compliant.
Okay.
So they may, they, they may need to go through that, but the building division would determine that during the business license review. And the Department of Motor Vehicles might require it as well. So, but we would leave that all for the business license part of it, I think generally.
Okay, sounds good.
Last question?
Sure.
Um, let's see. So the signs are already there. They don't have permit for it. We wanted to get a permit. So I'm wondering about the question of, I mean, the wording of condition number six. It says the application shall obtain permits for any new attached or detached signs proposed for the business. Shouldn't it just say, take out the word new? Because even if it's there, it still needs a permit, right?
Um, it, it, that's kind of semantics because technically it is a new sign. Um, it, it wasn't there at one point and now it is. But, uh, you can definitely take that out if you want to. That's not a concern. I don't mind if you want to take it out.
I think, I vote for taking out the word new.
Okay, because it is semantics, I can see someone that's crunched for money and trying to get and push this through could say, hey, it's not a new sign. It's been there.
Yeah.
No, I wouldn't.
Good catch.
Any other questions or comments on these ones? Okay, I'll let Jared talk about his item.
I'm gonna, um, represent, we gave Susan the night off tonight. I'm gonna represent the, um, the tax amendment for your planning commission pay maintenance, which is not an increase. It's just, um, a tax amendment that relates to uh, the planning commission's compensation. Um, and we, we, we made the change your compensation through the budget amendment process, through the city's normal annual fiscal budget process. Um, which was to say we, we presented to the mayor a couple, I think a couple of years ago now, in 2018, right? That we should up the pay from $25 to $40. He agreed. They asked the council if they would make that change in the budget and we did that. And it never occurred to us that we needed to correct the ordinance. So when we went to the ordinance to correct it, we realized that, well, the comment that came back from the attorney's office was, hey, why don't we just make there, from the mayor's office was, we did this through the budget. That seems like the way, that's the way we establish all of our fees and all of our compensations. Why is the planning commissions spelled out in the ordinance? Then you got to change it every time we want to review. Let's say we review this year in fiscal budget and say we want to raise to $50 or $60. Let's change process through it. Let's just make it the budget process by ordinance. So that's, that's the short version of what's in that tax amendment. Does that make sense to everybody? And I'm getting the thumb, yeah, it's, you, you are slightly below the average if you look at those numbers there. So you're, congratulations, you're all below average in terms of how we compensate you. So there you go.
And in terms of how we act.
You're all way above average in that. I have years of experience to tell you that. So, um, but anyway, that's, that's the nutshell version of that tax amendment. Does that make sense? Okay. Any concerns with that? Okay. Thanks, guys. Um, you have eight minutes to talk about, uh, a chair and vice chair for the year to take on the remaining electronic COVID meetings that we probably will have for a while this year, at least for a while this year, I would assume. And then make the transition back to, hopefully to real life by the end of the year. I'm, I'm really hopeful, but who knows, right? Um, so any thoughts? Do you guys want to?
I think Maren's up if we're going, she's one of.
I was gonna say, how's PTA going?
She's, in the longest, she's down the position.
I don't have my PTA excuse, huh?
There you go, Maren.
Trouble.
Come on, Maren.
That sounds like a, basically a nomination, so.
My moves that nominate Maren.
You're gonna need to do that in the main meeting, but there you go. Um, and then you, you do need a vice chair too, you guys, if that's, if Maren will accept the, will accept, would accept the nomination, then I would suggest, and you probably weren't quite logged on when we were talking about this before, since we don't have a chair and vice chair. My suggestion is that you choose who you think you're going to nominate and who will accept, uh, chair and vice chair nominations and have that person that's going to be the chair, open the meeting for the public and state that they're, they've been asked to open the meeting and that the first item of business, although it's stated as approval of minutes or something, needs to be the election of chair and vice chair, which is listed as item number seven, I guess. But that needs to be moved to the front and then you can say, we'll accept nominations from the commission and somebody on the commission that wants to nominate can make the nomination. We'll call a vote and move on from there.
Jared, does it take a vote to change the order of the meeting?
No, it just takes, it just takes a statement from whoever's chairing the meeting. So it takes your decision collectively now. If you're all okay with moving it to the front, we'll just make that determination and whoever's chairing the meeting that you'll decide on as well right now, we'll just say we're going to move that. We're going to do the business of electing an officer for, like, the election of officers for 2021 at the beginning of this meeting. So we'll take any nominations and someone can speak up and we'll be right on the right track. Does that make sense? And I, it's just voice vote, so not a big deal. Anyone want to, is anyone dying to be the vice chair?
Well, Sue's the only one of us that hasn't done vice chair, right? Or chair?
Sue's been the chair.
I've been, I've been vice chair. I don't mind being vice chair, just with the healthcare situation in my house. I don't know that chair would be a good fit for me.
But vice chair doesn't make you uncomfortable?
No. No, because I just have to sit and nod my head.
Maren's yet to say a word. That means you're in, okay?
I don't think I have a choice. I think, I think you're.
We do.
You're all going to vote on it, so.
I can be Maren's vice chair if nobody else wants to. And Travis, you want to be the third vice?
That's funny. I don't think any of us are afraid of vice chair. It's the chair that's scary.
Well, Maren is already the chair. I thought that was already true.
You're, I mean, Ned, go for it. Let's, that's fine.
I'm going for the vice. I, I can help.
Okay, but if this is how it all plays out, you guys are going to have to help me tonight because I don't know how this all goes.
It'll be fine.
I think I might have a script upstairs in my office. Do you want me to go grab it really quick so I can do prompts?
You can just follow along in case I miss anything and tell me.
I should have, I should have thought of the script.
I do think I have summary of meeting two on my computer that I'm on. I could pull it up and email it to you.
Okay.
Here, do you have your email up, Maren?
Yeah, well, it got hacked this week and apparently I'm not getting any emails, but Lisa, if you send it to that Gmail, it should be fine.
Uh, at Hotmail, is it your 84?
Not getting any emails. I didn't realize until today that I was like, where's my meeting link? This is weird, so.
So you didn't get the second one then?
No, I've got nothing.
Oh, no.
Oh, man.
I know. That's not good, huh?
Do you have the statement to read about COVID meeting?
It's just on this, right? This.
Yeah, on the.
Was it on the agenda?
Yeah.
Pay attention.
Yeah.
That's the most important one.
Is there a different one you want me to read?
Here, I, I have my old notes that Sue was actually talking about. See if I can take a picture of what I've got and at least send part of it to you.
All right, I'll put my email in the chat and then you can.
Yeah, that's the right statement to read. The one that's on the agenda is the statement.
Okay.
You can just, yeah.
Oh, okay.
No pressure.
Anything else I say? Tell me what I need to remember most important.
We will just walk you through it. You'll be just fine. So if you can, if you can start the meeting and just say, I've been asked to start this meeting, um, to welcome the planning commission, whatever, um, we've been asked to start this meeting. The first order of business is we need to handle an election for officers for 2021. Do we have any nominations? And then we can go from there. So if someone can be ready to step up and make the nominations for chair and vice chair, and then when they've made those nominations, Maren, then you would just have to say, I've got a nomination for Maren Patterson to serve as chair and vice chair. And then we'd like to call a vote. Can we have a vote? All in favor, say aye and, and you're done.
Okay.
Okay.
The only other thing I'd say to do, uh, for this meeting, since we're changing the order of it, um, just write down on your, on your thing to change the numbers. So technically two will now be three, three will be four.
And election, election of officers wasn't given a number though. It's just listed as a thing to do at the bottom with no number. So I don't think you need to change the numbers. Item number one wants the business, wants the other business is out of it.
Well, don't do that then. Never mind.
I, I, she didn't number it, so it's okay. We're all right. Okay?
Cool.
Oh, the big gun just logged on, so now we'll, we'll find out what the city attorney has to say.
Zach, keep him muted. Can you do that?
I like my job, Jared. I really do. I'm not gonna.
Hey, Maren, what's your phone number?
Uh, I'll put it in there.
Just announce it to the world.
I was gonna say, just say it over the air.
I'll just send it to Ned.
I should, I know I have it. I don't know why I can't find it.
That's okay. That's okay.
All right, well, it's technically six thirty.
Ready to start when you are.
But do we need to, do we need to close this? No?
Pre-meeting?
I think we can just begin the regular meeting.
Okay.
We'll start with the nominations, then read the statement, then, right?
I think you have to read, I would start with the statement, actually.
Okay.
You've been asked to kind of chair unofficially for now. So open the meeting and make your statement.
All right, well, are we ready to go then?
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay. Welcome to the Murray City Planning Commission meeting tonight. We will start with a statement. A public notice is hereby given that this meeting will occur electronically without an anchor location in accordance with Utah Code fifty-two, four, two oh seven, four, due to infectious disease coro, COVID-nineteen novel coronavirus. The Planning Commission Chair has determined that conducting a meeting with an anchor location presents substantial risk to the health and safety of those who may be present at the anchor location because physical distancing measures may be difficult to maintain in the Murray City Council chambers. The public may view this meeting via the live stream at www.murraycitylive.com or on the Murray City Utah Facebook page. If you would like to comment on an agenda item at the meeting, please register at that same location, right, at the Facebook page. Or you may submit your comments via email at planningcommission@murray.utah.gov. And we are, as we start the meeting, we are going to be doing the election of officers first thing before we begin our business items. So are there any nomin there and vice chair for two thousand twenty-one?
I would like to nominate Maren Patterson as our chair.
I have a second.
Great, are there any nominations for our vice chair?
I'd like to nominate Ned Hacker as vice chair of the Murray City Planning Commission for the year two thousand twenty-one.
I'd second.
Okay, so I have a nomination and a second for Maren Patterson as our chair, and a nomination for Ned Hacker as our vice chair. Can we take a vote? Do I, we just say all in favor, right?
All in favor.
Hi.
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 Most impassives, congratulations, Ned.
Well, for you, Maren.
I suppose. So Ned is going to be my assistant tonight as we move agenda and just make sure that we are on track. So I will just start this meeting by introducing our commissioners. With us tonight, we have myself, Maren Patterson, and Ned Hacker, the vice chair, Travis Nay, Lisa Malkovich, Sue Wilson, and our two new commissioners, Jeremy Lowery and Jake Pearson. Welcome to your first planning commission meeting, we're happy to have you. From staff tonight, we have Jared Hall and Zach Smallwood, and I think they mentioned that Brian Barnesworth is also with us tonight. All right, so, um, as we move through, we'll begin with item number one, the approval of minutes from our January seventh two thousand twenty-one meeting. Has everyone had a chance to review those minutes? And we didn't have any changes or adjustments in the pre-meeting, so.
Madam Chairman, I would make a motion that we approve the minutes from the January seventh, two thousand twenty-one meeting as written.
Great, I have a motion by Mr. Hacker to, to approve the minutes, so I have a second.
I'll second.
Great, thank you. Ms. Malkovich, okay. Um, and we just
That's a voice vote also.
All right, all in favor of approving those minutes for my last meeting?
Hi.
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 I as well, all right. And we will move on to business item number two, which is if there are any conflicts of interest among any of the commissioners on our panel tonight. Does anyone have a conflict of interest?
No.
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 No. Okay, I don't as well, so we will move on to item number three, which is approval of the findings of facts. We have one from our, let's see, Monty Gumbel for I H C Health Services and the Surgical Center at Tosh. Is everyone able to review that findings of facts?
Yes.
Changes or adjustments that need to be made?
And Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve the findings of fact for a conditional use permit for Tosh Ambulatory Surgical Center located at three twenty-six east, fifty-seven seventy south.
All right, I have a motion by Sue Wilson, is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, and by, second by Travis Nay. All in favor of approving the finding of facts?
Hi.
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 Hi, all right, wonderful. Okay, we will move into the conditional use portion of our agenda this evening. Item number four is a depot commercial, a temporary mobile office. Clint Tolman is the applicant. Are they present tonight?
Uh, yes, yes, I see him here.
All right, so we will have a presentation by Zach Smallwood of staff, and then we'll have the client, or the applicant.
Perfect, thank you, Chairwoman. I appreciate that. Let me go ahead and share my screen. All right, can you all see everything?
Yes.
Okay. For some reason, I cannot see you guys. Oh, here we go. You guys are hiding behind windows on me, there we go. All right, so tonight, the agenda item number four is depot commercial. It's a temporary conditional use structure at the address is located two thirty-two and two forty-eight west, forty-eight sixty south, located here on this vacant piece of property. Here's Commerce Drive to the north as that, as that makes that bend, is forty-eight hundred south. This is largely a commercial area. It is within our mixed-use zone. Oh, I forgot that I had this one here. So that little dot right there on the, on the map here is the two properties, and then you'll see forty-eight hundred south along the, the top here in I fifteen towards the left. So I wanted to give a little bit of background first. This is what the property will look like after it's built. So this is, just to kind of give you an idea of what's being put where, I wanted to start with that, so that you can see there is a commercial building. They did get site plan approval from, as an administrative approval through staff here, that, that is part of the mixed-use code that does allow for buildings to, as long as they meet all the ordinances, they're allowed to just obtain a building permit. So they also did get a variance, because as you can see, in these red lines, those, that O H P stands for overhead power lines. There are overhead power lines running all throughout this property. So they got a variance to the, to the required setbacks there, so that they could place the building in this location. So I wanted to move on to this next part, because this will be illustrative a little bit later. You can see this little rocky area here that, that's in number three, kind of at the south. That's their temporary construction access, which is also, and that's pretty self-explanatory, that's where they're going to access during construction. So this is the proposed location of the temporary office building. All right, I'm sorry, the mobile office building with ADA ramps, et cetera. And then this is kind of an overhead of the area as well. I wanted to, here's a floor plan of the, of, of the mobile office. You can see there's four offices here with a large space and a restroom. One of the conditions that the wastewater division has is that a sewer connection be provided if there is going to be, if that restroom is going to be used. And so that is a condition on the report as well. So I did do a site visit, and as you can see, the, it had started being installed at this location. The image on your right, you can see that temporary access already there. So this is largely, and I apologize, I should have clarified, this mobile office is not uncommon for construction sites, and these are allowed generally through construction sites without any approvals. The approval that you're looking at this evening is to allow them to operate their construction business out of that mobile office building instead of just for the construction of the, of the permanent structure as well. So with that, we are recommending that the planning commission approve the temporary conditional use permit for eighteen months to allow a mobile office be used at the properties addressed two thirty-two and two forty-eight west, forty-eight sixty south, subject to the three conditions in your staff report. Any questions or, or comments for staff at this point?
Zach, I have a question that doesn't really pertain to what we're going to vote on tonight, but do we know what the business is that they want to put in eventually?
It is, it's a multi-tenant building, I believe, so it'll be leased out. It's largely, if I remember correctly, Jared, I didn't do the review on the, the site plan. I believe it's mostly an industrial type building. Yeah.
That's correct.
You know. Thank you.
Great.
Zach, I have a question, if, I'm, I'm sorry, Maren.
Sure.
If the, if the restroom room facilities are, if they, if they elect to, to utilize the restroom facilities, what would be the mechanism to inspect that they've been installed?
It would be
It's been hooked up to, to, to the sewer or whatnot?
Yeah, that's a great question, thanks. So that would be done during the, kind of the business licensing side. They'll have their different reviews. There is a, a fire department review, police review, code enforcement, so zoning, so they would actually get this, a copy of this. And our code enforcement officer, Mark Boran, he would, you know, ask them, hey, are you gonna use this restroom? And also, and if they say, you know, yes, and they'll say, well, you need to make sure that you get that connection. And also, this is the opportunity here. So when the chair opens this up and speaks to the applicant, she provides, she asks them if they've reviewed the staff report, and then will be able to comply with the conditions. So we have a, a couple different ways to make sure that they're going to do it. Does that kind of answer your question?
Yeah, that's great, and I've known Mark Born for almost twenty years, and he's, he'll, he'll be on it, he's awesome.
Awesome, great.
Any other questions for staff? Okay. Um, I think we'll talk to the applicant.
And if, I, I believe you said it was, uh, can the applicant raise their hand again? I just want to make sure.
Clint Tolman?
Perfect. Okay, you should be able to speak now, Mr. Tolman. Are you there? I see him, I saw
The notorious It's a double mute.
Yeah. I saw him mute himself and unmute himself.
Is, is, he's saying in the chat that it's not working, Zach? I wonder if
Let me So, Mr. Tolman, I'm going to promote you to a panelist. It's going to kind of glitch out for just a second, but it will bring you into the meeting again. Hold on just one second.
Hello, can you hear me now?
Yes, we can, thank you.
Perfect, thank you, sorry about that.
Little difficulties. If you would state your name and address for us, for the record.
Yeah, my name is Clint Tolman, and my address is one ninety-seven west, forty-eight sixty south, here in Murray.
Great, wonderful, and like Mr. Smallwood said, those conditions of this conditional use permit, were you able to review those?
I was.
Yes, and will you be able to comply?
Yeah, I do have a few questions if, if I can present those, or is there an opportunity later?
Right now would be the time.
Okay, so in the, the hooking up to sewer, I don't, we, obviously, we would love to hook up to sewer right away, but you know, that's going to take a little bit. Would, you know, we, we have two tanks, one for fresh water and one for sewer that gets changed out bimonthly. Is that something that's tolerable until we can get hooked up, or do we have to hook up right away? So it's a, it's an electric pump system that they come and clean it out every, every other week?
I would suggest that you, you go and, and speak to Ben Ford. He is the wastewater. I apologize, I don't know his title, superintendent, something like that. So he, he's, he's in charge of the wastewater division, and he can, he can help answer some of those questions.
Okay. And then, go ahead, all right, you, please.
No, I was just gonna say, from what I understand, he could talk to Mr. Ford and get those clearances, but when he wants to hook up to the sewer, he would need to comply.
Gotcha. Okay, yeah, I will contact him first thing.
Great, anything else, sorry?
Yeah, and so, and just to clarify, a couple of que, or comments that you guys had, so the office that we have, that two eleven where I, I said the parking will be, so we own that building that's just across the street. So Paniso Coat Builders, and then Goldstream that I work with, so we're a construction company, and so when it says we're gonna have four or five people in it, it's not all time, it's, it's, our project managers are managers and stuff that are off-site, you know, might need a couple hours to come in and work. So it's not a full-time, so we'll have two construction people during the construction process, and then you know, one or two different people that come in when they're not working in the field, coming to do their, their checkups, and then leaving shortly after. So it's not a, they're not there all the time, if that makes sense.
Great, yeah, thank you for that additional information. Is there anything else that you would like to tell the commission?
Uh, no, not, not unless they have any other questions.
Does anyone have any questions for the applicant? Okay, so, Mr. Tolman, we will open this up to public comment, and if we have comments, we might address those to you or address, depending on what they are. So at this point, we would like to open this conditional use permit up to public comment. Have we had any prior emails or comments about this application before the meeting?
We have not, no, we have not had anything yet.
Okay, and is there anyone that is watching the meeting that would like to comment on this?
I think, so I'll just throw it out there, just to make sure that we're being consistent. If anybody wants to speak to this, if you'll raise your hand, push the raise hand button, then I can unmute you.
And also, I guess while we're waiting, anyone that's watching could send in an email as well during this public comment portion.
Correct. And I'm not And I'm not seeing any yet.
Should we formally read the public comment piece that's on the? Meeting minutes or the meeting agenda? If people would like to comment how to do that. By email, Facebook.
If you would like to comment on this agenda item, you can. Register, I don't know if you can still register. Can you still register? You need to do that before the meeting.
You can still register.
Register at the facebook.com/murraycityutah. And submit comments via email at planningcommission@murray.utah.gov. Comments are limited to three minutes or less and written comments will be read into the record. And please include your name and contact information. Anything yet, Zach? Any emails or anything?
No, I don't have any emails and I have not seen anybody raise their hand or anything like that. So I think you're.
Okay, so I think it's appropriate to close the public comment portion. At this time and bring that back up to the commission for any discussion or questions or motion.
Madam Chair, I'll make a motion that the planning commission approve a temporary conditional use permit for 18 months. To allow a mobile office to be used at the properties address 232 and 248 West 4860 South, subject to conditions one through three.
Great, I have a motion by Sue Wilson. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Great, thank you, Mr. Hacker. So I have a motion by Sue Wilson in a second by Mr. Hacker for the planning commission to approve the temporary conditional. Use permit for 18 months to allow the mobile office to be used at the properties address. 32 and 248 West 4800 South. Can we take a vote?
Yep, I most certainly can. Commissioner Wilson?
Yes.
Commissioner Hacker?
Yes.
Commissioner Lowry?
Yes.
Commissioner Pearson?
Yes.
Commissioner Malkovich?
Yes.
Commissioner Renee?
Yes.
And Chair Patterson?
Yes, so the motion passes and good luck as you work on your. Figure project and your temporary project. So thank you.
Thank you guys so much. It'll be a challenge with all the overhead transmission lines, so it'll be fun.
Yes, thank you. Thank you for being with us.
Thank you, guys. Thank you for your time.
We will move on to agenda item number five. Access Auto Brokers. And Jamie Hansen is the applicant. If they, do you need them to raise their hand, Zach?
After I do my presentation. How about that?
Yep.
Okay, all right. All right, so this is an application for a conditional use permit for auto sales at 4555 South. Commerce Drive, number 200. Located here, as you can see. There is some weird property lines. These black lines are weird property lines that have existed. I'll get back to those in just a minute, but I wanted to make sure that we, that I touch on those. This is in the MG zone, which allows for auto sales business. Businesses subject to a conditional use permit. As you can see here, there is a 2,900 square foot office, approximately 400 square foot office space. Sorry, 2,900 square foot warehouse. I think I said office. And then a 400 square foot office space. Couple photos of the site. In your staff report, it calls out doing additional. Landscaping improvements located here along Commerce Drive. Also, it states that that staff noticed a sign permit. Located on the property. You can see here in this bottom photo that that was the photo that I, or the sign that I found. Also, just to keep in mind. So as you can see, these, on the picture on your right. If you see the two, you can see on the right-hand side of it, there's kind of like a small. Curb. And then on the left-hand side, you can see almost another small curb. That goes back to those weird property lines that I'll go to now. You can kind of see those here. That is technically Murray City owned right of way. That has just existed prior to the improvements that were done on Commerce Drive. I apologize, I don't know the year when they changed this all out. I don't know. But this property that kind of loops up is owned by Murray City. This property just to the north of it is owned by the Utah Department of Transportation, otherwise known as UDOT. And then there, the rest of these properties are a combination of UDOT and Murray City owned properties. So it's kind of a mess. But it is my understanding from looking at other projects. And other conditional use permits that we have looked at, that UDOT allows for parking on on this site. So we're not asking for them to remove parking, but we're not including it in their parking calculations. So I believe in my staff report that. That I've stated that no more than five vehicles will be kept on site for sales at any time. The applicant has stated that they will keep all of their for sale cars within the building. Then let me just pull this up real quick. So they do need to stripe approximately five spaces for this location. I've I've put a condition into for the property owner and the applicant to work with the planning division staff. To restripe the whole property. It needs it pretty, pretty badly. So I've asked that they redo that entirely. Other than that, there's not a lot in here. I, one last thing I'll touch on, I mentioned it earlier, is the landscaping right here. We've asked for some additional. Like another tree and some additional shrubs and stuff. We did receive an email from the applicant this evening that that addresses some of that. And I think Jared will read it, or I can read it, whoever wants to read it. When we get to that portion of the of the agenda. Yeah, so let me get to the end. Sorry, I just completely lost my train of thought there. So staff is recommending that you approve the conditional use permit for the vehicle sales business of the property. Address 4555 South Commerce Drive, Suite Number 200. Subject to the nine conditions that are outlined in your staff report. Actually, I do remember that Ms. Malkovich wanted to amend. Number six to to state to remove the word new. So, yes, we recommend doing that. Any questions or anything for me at this point?
Mr. Smallwood, would this be an appropriate time to ask you about another amendment to the conditions?
Of course.
I just realized that condition number three in our packet when the parking was discussed. It was stated that we need at least one ADA parking spot, but in condition three, we didn't specify that.
Condition number four addresses it.
Oh, darn it. I missed it. Okay, I'm glad you have it. Good work.
All right.
Can I just ask a quick question? On a site this size, are you looking for one ADA stall for the entire site? Are you talking about restriping the entire site or are you talking about just five spots and an ADA spot?
I would hope, so. Technically, all I'm requiring is to stripe the five spaces. However, in the email that was was. Sent in by the applicant or by the property owner, they they want to restripe the entire property. So they will have to meet any condition, they would have to meet any requirements. That are laid out in the parking ordinance, the parking section regarding ADA spaces.
But you don't care where they're at. If they're redoing the whole site and they're told that they have to put two or three ADA, you don't care where they're at along the site as long as they're on the site.
Correct. I leave that up to them to kind of decide which where those are best placed.
Great. That's a great question. Thank you.
Definitely.
And I think that that's encouraging that they are maybe willing to do, the property owner is willing to do more than is required. So that's a. That's breath of fresh air sometimes. Okay, is the applicant present?
Yes, let me. All right, Ms. Hansen, you should be able to unmute yourself.
Can you hear me?
We can. Thank you for being with us. If you would state your name and address for the record.
My name is Jamie Hansen and I live at 3813 East Evelyn Drive, Salt Lake City, Utah.
Wonderful. Thank you for being with us. I know that they just had the. Conditions on the screen. Have you had a chance to review those conditions?
Yes, I have.
Great, and will you be able to comply with them?
Yes, I will.
Great, wonderful. Is there any additional information or presentation you would like to make for the commission?
No, I think, you know, like Zach has already said, the property, we. Have been in contact with the property owner regarding the landscaping and the striping. And he, they have already reached out to. You to let them know that they are willing to do all this, so. That's great news. And we're already in contact with. The sign people to get a permit for the sign. So I think that's, we pretty much, we're on top of. Taking care of all of the requests.
Yeah, sounds like you are. That's great. Okay, well, we will now open this for public comment. If there's anyone that has a comment they would like to speak to this item. Again, you can go to register to make a comment. Do they register at the tiny URL? Is that the address they mean?
Yeah, that's where they they would register, the tiny URL.
Okay, so if you would like to register to speak to this comment, you would go to tinyurl.com. Slash PC 012121. Or you can email in a comment at planningcommission@murray.utah.gov. And so now would be the chance you could submit those comments to this item. And I think, Zach, you mentioned that there was a comment already.
Yes, it was from the property owner. I just forwarded it over to Jared. Two seconds for him to get it. And then I'll have him. Read it.
Now, I believe I have it now. Do you want me to read that?
Yes, please.
Okay, so. Towers and Company is the property owner, so Tom Monson, representing the property owner. Wrote in to say for conditional use permit for Access Auto Brokers LLC. As the property owner, we will install the additional landscape elements required. And we will stripe the parking lot, parking to comply with the pertinent land use ordinances. However, we would like to be able to wait until spring to do both. We have budgeted for and have plans to repave the parking areas in front of both buildings in the spring. And we'll restripe the parking at that time. A second question for the commission about the access to the property. If the driveway is a public right of way that is owned by Murray City, who is responsible to maintain the right of way? It is in severe disrepair.
And then I'll just speak to those real quickly. Typically, Mark Boran, our code enforcement officer, does in the wintertime. Work with the applicants and stuff to. Draft. I don't know what it's called. I don't remember what it's called.
Deferral. We do deferral agreements to get improvements that can't be done during the wrong seasons. No problem.
Pretty basic word, deferral. You would think I would remember that, but apparently I don't. But, so, yeah, he usually works with them to do that, so I don't anticipate that being a problem. Regarding the. Maintenance of the right of way, that's a great question. I would probably. Direct you up to the streets department, I think, yes, Jared's nodding his head, so yes, the streets department. And you kind of work with them. But I can see Tom Monson is actually, he's on the the meeting as well, so. I would refer him up there and work with them on getting that cleaned up and fixed. And then other than that, I haven't received any other comments or. Oh, actually, Mr. Monson is raising his hand. Would you like, would, do you want, is it okay to unmute him or?
I think so. I mean, we have done that before, right, where we've had an email comment and let someone.
Okay, let me. Okay, Mr. Monson, you should be able to unmute yourself.
Yeah, I guess.
Can you hear me?
Yes, you can.
Great, thank you. Yeah, just to, just to make a comment about this, the access road there. I've talked to this, to the city road people about this before. Because we've had issues, you know, where a water line is broken in there and. And we've tried to determine who's responsible to fix it. It turns out we are, but. Which is not a problem, but the road. I mean, it's in serious bad shape. I mean, there's potholes in there that would swallow a car. And, you know, we're, we're looking at a serious investment to repave our. Our parking because it needs it. And like I said, we'll restripe everything then, after that's done. But I have a hard time swallowing an extra $20,000 to pave that right of way when we don't own it. And the city has basically just said. It's not a street, so we're not going to do it, but yet Murray owns it. So I don't, I just don't know what to do there. I haven't, I haven't received much support from the street people, so. I'm just wondering.
Frustration in that, but I think that all we can do is refer you to the department that would be able to. You might need to redress it with them again and further. Hopefully you'll get more support this time, but. At this time, for this application, the right of way. I know that it's maybe not in good shape, but is not relevant to this application, so. Hopefully, they, you can work something out with them.
Okay, I understand that, that it's not really pertinent to the situation here. I just. Wondered if this group has any sway with. With the city on those kinds of things.
I think unfortunately, they set their own. Parameters.
The only thing I could really speak to, Ms. Chair. I believe that water connections and things like that, water line breaks, technically are property owner. Things that are handled by the property owner. They might be more willing to have the discussion about a street repavement on a right of way. Where that is kind of public right of way. I think they would be more willing to engage in that kind of conversation. But again, I would, that's who I would suggest speaking to, for sure.
Okay, thanks for your time.
Thanks for your comment. Have there been any other public comments? Okay. I think if it's appropriate, I'll close the public comment portion of this meeting. Is there any questions for the applicant that the commission has? Yeah.
It's not actually for the applicant. It's more for city staff. Isn't there a vacation or right of way process that's available? That, I mean, isn't that, isn't that something that exists?
Yes, it is. And this particular, some of you might remember the. The dog daycare that that came up a couple of years ago at the top of this right of way. So the the challenge with this particular piece is that it's. Um, so the, the challenge with this particular piece is that it's um, rights of way are an interesting animal. They're like alone in the universe in terms of their existence. Their property that's held in common by everybody that's part of the municipality, by the, the common wealth, whatever you want to call it. They're not parceled land. This forty-five fifty south used to be the right of way. And when that was realigned in two thousand three, two thousand four, I think it became kind of an orphan. They did not vacate it to the property owners like they normally would, like you're talking about Travis, because there are utilities underneath that right of way. They care basically about the utilities, not the access anymore. So they've kept the right of way property or the property that used to be public right of way. It's now parceled out. It, it, it has a parcel ID number, which makes it sort of not what it used to be necessarily. That might be some of the lack of response that Mr. Monson is getting from Public Works or from the streets department on it. They may not know exactly what their obligations are anymore with it. Um, they haven't felt like in the past they're able to vacate it effectively yet. That might be the better way to go would be to vacate it, let it become parts of, of part of the parking lots. But it has stayed in, 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 that there are some rights of access over it to other properties that are still there. Um, those could be, those could be dealt with, with other easements and things. I think it's mainly for the utilities, but it's complicated, I guess is what I'm getting to, is that it's complicated for everybody that accesses from it and like Mr. Monson, it's complicated for the city because it's still there and it, its existence is odd now. There is a process to vacate though, but even vacating that piece is problematic for us, so I guess we've got more work to do.
And then to add into that, you throw in the State Department of Transportation
That I was gonna say.
involved as well. That, that complicates it to a degree a hundred times more.
Yep.
Yeah.
Yeah, great question though. Thank you Travis. I think that that's worth, I mean, trying to advise and pursue possible.
Uh, Madam Chair, if it's all right, I'd like to make a motion unless someone else has comments.
I think you're good.
I'll make a, okay, I'll make a motion to approve a conditional use permit to allow the operation of vehicle sales business at the property address forty-five fifty-five South Commerce Drive, Suite two hundred, subject to conditions one through six, or excuse me, one through nine, with the amendment to condition six to read, the applicant shall obtain permits for any attached or detached signs proposed for the business.
Great. I have a motion by Travis Nay for the Planning Commission to approve a conditional use permit to allow the operation of the vehicle sales business at the property address four fifty-five South Commerce Drive, number two hundred, with the change to um, condition number six. Is there a second on that motion?
A second.
Thank you so much. Um, can we?
Yes. Uh, Commissioner Hacker.
Yes.
Okay, yes. Commissioner Nay.
Yes.
Commissioner Milkovich.
Yes.
Mr. Pearson.
Yeah.
Commissioner, wow, Commissioner Lowry.
Yes.
Commissioner Wilson.
Yes.
And Chair Patterson.
Yes, so motion passes. Um, good luck to um, the applicant and the property owner. Hopefully that you guys can move forward in resolving some of those issues. So thank you for being with us tonight. Okay, um, we will move on to agenda item number six, which is uh, land use ordinance text amendment um, about planning commission compensation. So Mr. Hall.
Thank you. Um, so yes, as you mentioned, this is a text amendment regarding planning commission compensation and it's, it's related to section seventeen twelve oh seven oh of the land use ordinance. And I'll, I'll get to this real quickly in just a moment, but to, to give you kind of the nickel tour of the issue, the planning commission's compensation was raised uh, a couple of years ago during fiscal year twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen um, from twenty-five dollars to forty dollars. We did that through the, the budget amendment process. Every year the city reviews its fiscal budgets. We spend a number of months doing it and then adopt those. And in preparing and submitting that budget that year, we had suggested to the mayor's office that we needed to raise the planning commissioners pay to be more um, on par with other cities in the valley. They agreed, made that budget amendment proposal to the council. The council adopted it and we started paying you all forty dollars a meeting instead. It was, I, I can't even remember how it came up, but we recognized recently that we had not changed the ordinance and that there is actually an ordinance that controls how you're compensated. And it reads uh, as the current language is listed there, that they shall receive, commission members shall receive a maximum of twenty-five dollars. We never changed that, so we decided we better do that and get compliant with our own codes. And as we prepared to do that, the mayor's office noted and said, hey, didn't we do this through the budget process last time? And we said, yes, we did. And they said, why don't we just change the code instead of it, instead of adjusting it to say forty dollars instead of twenty-five dollars, it would make imminently more sense to adjust it to say it's handled under the budget amendment process. Um, rather than say it that way, we've, we've, we've proposed saying it as it's shown there in the red line and strikeout. We strike the part that says maximum twenty-five dollars and insert uh, per meeting in a dollar amount determined by the office of the mayor and adopted by the city council. That is in effect, the city's budget amendment process. Um, so that means that basically, the result is that every year, um, if we need to raise the, the pay, we can simply take that to the mayor and council and see if they're willing to put that in the budget and have it happen and it will still be um, compliant with the ordinance. Zach, would you go to the next slide? Uh, Susan Nixon, um, our associate planner in the office also did a bunch of research on this work to get it ready, just to see if we wanted to raise that even more as we were preparing to make that change. Um, and in comparing some of the cities around the valley, we just thought it would be interesting for you to have that, that table that's in your reports. And the dinner stuff is just to make you jealous that there are cities that give dinner to their commissioners when we're meeting live. Um, we're actually looking at other things too and whether we should look into that. So we wanted to get some other information as we could. Um, we're close to, as you can see at the bottom, it's all of the compensations averaged together, about sixty dollars is the average. Um, if you, if you remove the, the cities that don't compensate their, uh, their commissioners, um, to the endless shame of Mill Creek and, and Salt Lake. So we are, as, as we've stated, if you, would you go back one slide Zach? So as, as you note then, when we move forward in the budget year this year, for example, if we want to, to uh, raise the commission uh, compensation, we would simply be able to do that by suggesting the mayor's office that we want to get more on par with what we have uh, around the valley and see if we can't get that approved through the budget process. So, um, and you can go two slides forward now, please Zach. I'm trying to work Zach out as much as I can in this deal tonight. We did make a couple of findings. I just put them in the slides so that you can see those or so that the public knows that we do consider these things and, and make findings as we take it forward to the council. We'll make sure they are aware of the findings that uh, we've made as a staff, recommended to you as a commission, that this is um, a recommendable change and that uh, we are recommending that you write forward a recommendation of approval. So just for the sake of public to understand and for the, the new commissioners, this is a good place to point out how some of the things that we do are different. The other two items tonight's agenda were conditional use permits. The planning commission votes on an action. The planning commission is the land use authority for those kinds of decisions. For this kind of change, because it's a text amendment to the ordinance itself, the planning commission is a recommending body. So a motion on this item tonight would be a recommendation of either approval or denial to the council to update the section and then the council will take the final action. So there are a few things that we do like that. Zone changes and changes to the text of the ordinance go on from the planning commission to the council. Most of the other things that we do, the commission takes their own action. So anyway, we are recommending that you forward a recommendation of approval to the council. Do you have any questions for staff? Thank you.
Great, thank you. Um, so at this time, we would open it up to um, a public comment or is it a public meeting?
It's a public, it's, it's a public hearing, so you, you can take comment. We didn't receive any comments by email or have anyone register to speak to it. Apparently everyone's okay with you giving your forty dollars.
I was gonna say they don't have their finger on the pulse of the compensation for the planning.
No one has objected, so you're all okay.
If anyone would like to speak to this item, um, you can send an email to planningcommission@murrayutah, murray.utah.gov or register to speak at this meeting at tinyurl.com slash PC zero one two one two one. So we will, we will give just a minute for anyone to be able to speak.
I'd have to ask or confirm if, if we need to reimburse the city for their overage in our pay for the last several years.
Oh, you mean because you weren't attending live? Or because you, or because you feel overpaid at the, oh, because this, the discrepancy in the ordinance?
Ordinance.
Yeah, we'll be, we'll be coming around to collect that back from you soon. But we wanted to surprise you with those knocks on the door, so.
Yeah, I'll be ready.
Brace yourselves. No, there, we, we, we didn't feel like it was too much challenge there.
Mr. Hall, do you work for Granite School District?
I do. Do I look rich? No.
It, it just feels very similar.
Have we had any emails or?
No.
People registered to speak?
No.
Okay, um, I think I will close the public comment portion of this meeting and, and bring it back if there's any further questions or discussion by the commission. Yes, Mr. Nay.
Madam Chair, I have, I have a single question.
Yeah.
What do they get for meals? Is, is it pizza? Is it, is it steak and lobster? I mean, I, I feel like the, the council needs to hear this and understand really the full extent of, of the issues here.
They receive a, a variety of tasty and delightful meals, I'm sure. I have no idea.
I will say, because I have experience in Cottonwood Heights, um, they got Chinese food usually, um, or uh, pizza occasionally. They usually tried to find something that was local to the city and then um, they'd get food from there.
It happens, it happens a lot of different ways, a lot of different places. When I was at Farmington, we had our, our work meetings, our pre-meetings like we have at six o'clock here. We had them in the, in the kitchen facility of the city hall that, at that time. We had them around the big kitchen table basically and, and ate our dinners. We got them from different places. So I was only there for a year. That was the only time I ever worked anywhere we got meals, so.
Okay, well, I will entertain a motion. Remember, it's a forward a recommendation motion.
All right, I'll stay. Yeah, okay, go Ned.
All right, Madam Chairman, I make motion to forward a recommendation of approval to the city council for their request to update chapter seventeen point twelve point zero seven zero planning commission compensation of the Murray City Land Use Ordinance as presented uh, in the staff report with conditions as Jared showed one and two.
Yes, thank you Vice Chair. Um, I have a motion by Ned Hacker to forward a recommendation of approval to the city council for their request to update chapter seventeen point one two point zero planning commission compensation of the Murray City Land Use Ordinance as presented by staff. Do I have a second?
I can second.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Milkovich.
Do you want me to call for a vote? So are you ready? Okay. Mr. Hacker?
Yes.
Ms. Milkovich?
Yes.
Ms. Wilson?
Yes, sorry, couldn't unmute.
It's okay. Mr. Nay?
Yes.
Mr. Lowry?
Yes.
And Mr. Pearson?
Yes.
And Ms. Patterson?
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Great. Motion passes. Now we're all updated. To the city council, I guess. Um, okay, is there any further business?
We, um, just to, to let you know, we have a fairly similarly light agenda coming up next, um, next meeting, the first, first Thursday, February. We have a few items. They're all smaller items. Just so you're aware, we have a couple of things on the horizon. For the end of February, they're a little bigger. But the first meeting in February should be fairly light too, if you're planning a fun evening out or something that first Thursday, February. I don't know what you might be doing, but it wouldn't be a huge long meeting, I wouldn't expect, so, just so you're aware.
Are you doing anything, Jared?
I have a question.
Yeah.
Have we heard anything more on the Galvin property?
Remind me where a Galvin is. I'm sorry, I'm not.
By the Bonnet Ball Baseball Field. They couldn't decide if we wanted a through street or a cul-de-sac?
Yeah, no, great question. That trip you, or sorry, is that right?
Yeah, trip, trip lane.
Yeah, um, it, it's still, so the, the, the last action or the last uh, kind of update for that would be that the city council wants the staff to make a presentation to them about the use of eminent domain, the possible use of eminent domain and what that might mean in connecting that road. Uh, we, we didn't want to make that presentation until we had a full understanding of the traffic impacts, et cetera. The first traffic study that was done had a, a flaw in it that Trey wanted corrected. I think that that flaw has been corrected and the traffic study's been rehashed, but I'm not sure where we are after that. We haven't taken it to the council for their discussion about that yet. And the uh, subdividers are not, uh, in a huge hurry. They want to get it right and, and know what's going on. So we haven't been asked to place it on an agenda for the council to use yet or to discuss yet specifically, although we do know they want us to present to them about it. That's all I know, sorry.
Okay, thanks.
Sure. Um, that reminded me that we probably ought to give you a quick update. The um, the city council will be hearing about your recommendations for Fashion Place West, small area plan Zach, is it? That's in February, I believe. Yes, we've done a council action form for that. They'll be hearing about that in February for their, um, in, in their committee of the whole where they don't take any action and then at the end of February for their, to take some kind of action. And then uh, they're going to be looking at your design guidelines as well, February and March, that you've recommended. So um, just some things that are moving on from your body to the council, to be aware of.
Hey, great. Any other?
I do have, excuse me, um, I do have one uh, thing that I just popped into my head. That's why I kind of like screamed at you here at this moment. Um, when we make a motion to, or I guess when you make a motion, I'm used to my commission. When you make a motion to adjourn, um, can you make sure that you include the time? Um, we have somebody new doing the minutes. Um, and she's noticed that it doesn't say the time and she's asking me what time we end and I'm like, oh, uh, uh, I don't know.
So I give her, I give her pretty accurate times based on when I tell my wife, when I text my wife, she's okay to come and pick me up. That's, that's been reliable so far, but you can't count on that forever. You never know when my truck's gonna get out of the shop.
I think we should stick with that.
So when someone makes a motion to adjourn, they should say the time in their motion?
Yes, please. Yes.
So unless we have any further items, I will entertain a motion.
Hey, Madam Chair, at seven twenty-eight PM, I will make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion approved, motion carried. Is that what you say?
Thanks, everybody. We really appreciate it.
Excellent. Thank you.
Thank you.
Care.
Thank you.
Jeremy, welcome aboard, gentlemen.
Welcome aboard, people.
Thank you for being here, our new commissioners.
Thank you so much.
All right.
And everyone send you all of your notes and details and how you do this, be the chair, so thank you.
Hey, great job.
You did a great job, Aaron.
On the fly. Yes, fantastic.
Yeah, on the fly.
So they're keeping me in line.
Okay, good night, everyone.
Night, everybody.